I call to order the Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for July the 16th, 2018, and I'll recognize Commissioner Milton Campbell for invocation and Vice Chairman Josh Lael for a pledge of allegiance.
Stand.
Our Father, we'd like to thank you for the state you've blessed us with. Lord, we'd like to thank you for all the things in our lives that you've surrounded us with. Lord, we ask your guidance and leadership as we make decisions for our county that are in the best interest of our citizens. Lord, we ask that you keep a protective hedge around our emergency service personnel, firemen, insurance department, EMS, and continue to watch over them and give that comfort to their families as they're out on calls. Lord, just guide us and lead us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I open the floor for any commissioner's report, if you want to have something to talk about.
The only thing I've got, this is a recent July publication of Business North Carolina, We Get This at Work, and I think we've talked about unemployment and other economic trends in Alexander County, and of course, I think we've talked about how low our unemployment rate is. And in this magazine, Alexander County is second in North Carolina, Buckland County's at 2.8%, and Alexander's at 3%. And, you know, not that long ago, I can remember a much higher number, which I think that's certainly having unemployment at that low rate is absolutely a great thing, but it presents itself a different set of challenges when someone's looking to relocate or invest here and needs employees. You've basically taken this, in essence, we're almost fully capacity with employment. But again, it's the North Carolina Business Magazine, it's a very good, probably one of the best magazines to talk about our state and various things that are going on at different parts of the state. But again, very encouraging, but it does have a little bit of a cloud in the sense that one would question where you'd find workers if you were going to relocate a company here. But again, that's a better problem to have than 8% unemployment.
That's right.
So anyway, thought that was a good article.
All right. Good information. Thank you, Milton. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to adoption of the agenda. I entertain the motion to adopt the agenda. I think each one's had time to look at it and entertain the motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, have a motion, have a second?
I will second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any discussion relating to the agenda? All in favor, but raise the right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Okay, moving on, our next item is public comment. Has anyone signed up? All right. At this time, I'll move on to number two and recognize Russell Green, Emergency Services Director, about our 2018 North Carolina avian influenza full-scale exercise. Thank you, sir.
Chairman Reese, Commissioners, Manager French, Clerk, thank you for the opportunity to stand up here tonight. Back in June the 18th through the 21st, Alexander County participated in a statewide exercise for avian influenza. And a lot of people automatically say, why did you do that? And yes, we have to do a certain number of exercises to get some of the emergency management program grants we've received, but the primary reason we participated, and I pulled these statistics today, Alexander County ranks ninth in the state for poultry in 2017. We produced 32,300,000 broilers in this county. We ranked fourth in the state for layers with 920,000 layers in 2017. The 2016 report says Alexander County produced $120,83,000 in broilers and $26,977,000 in layers for a combined poultry total of 147 million dollars in this county in 2016. That's the primary reason we participate in the avian influenza exercise. The exercise, we were approached by the state to participate in the exercise, and if you remember, we participated in the exercise back in 2008, the first thing they held in the state. And when I was asked about this one, I said, who threw me under this bus? And they said, well, we want to see where we've come from from the last time. Exercise started actually on June the 18th. We weren't participating, but the State Department of Agriculture, working with federal agencies, federal USDA, was holding discussions on that day concerning indemnification of birds. Now, high path avian influenza disease that we all hear about, it makes the news, we killed millions of birds in 2015, 2016 in Minnesota and those surrounding states. Low path avian influenza is becoming as much a threat in the fact that you can't take them to market. The biggest issue right now is, in the most recent events, in Tennessee and Kentucky, USDA did not indemnify the birds in low path, and the companies wound up eating them, eating that cost. That's scary. That's very concerning to us. So we were asked to participate, as well as Johnson County was asked to participate. So they held those discussions about indemnification, and I haven't heard the results of all those yet, but it will be in the first part of August. On June the 19th, on June the 18th, we started off with a suspected case, them having conversations. They confirmed that theoretically on the 18th. On June the 19th, Department of Agriculture depopulation crews arrived in Alexander County. This actually took place out at Mr. Carson's poultry house on Pleasant Hill Church Road. Had about 35 folks from Department of Agriculture and their support agencies on site out there. Our staff and emergency services was out there. We provided them with a tent, cooler full of water and a fan. It was extremely hot, if you remember, on the 19th. Four of our fire departments, Bastille Fire Department, Sugarlo Fire Department, Hidnute Fire Department, Titleville Fire Department, were transporting water for their operations. They literally, they suited up in their Tyvek suits, they went in a poultry house, they sprayed foam, just like they would in a real situation. When they came out, their decon crews were there and they deconned those folks before they left the farm. During that event, we actually had a true response out there. Couple of their guys got too hot, so we dispatched the rehab trailer that was purchased last year by our emergency service agencies, put it on scene with our EMS director and Mark Earl from my office, and they were taking care of those guys in the trailer, trying to get them cooled off. Shut that operation down about lunchtime, took them to the Bastille Fire Department, fed them lunch, had a hot wash, and called it a day. On the, excuse me, just a second, let me flip the page here, so I don't miss anything. On the 20th, the scenario for the exercise was that disease had spread from that farm to two other farms in Alexander County, which is what you would anticipate with this disease. The North Carolina Department of Agriculture and State Emergency Management activated the state EOC at a level three. They go to level five, so a level three is pretty significant for them. Alexander County, we actually activated our EOC, activated our EOC, and pulled in key county staff. And not as much to work this exercise that morning, but our key staff, primarily department heads and their support folks, have key roles during a disaster when it comes to our EOC. So Manager French agreed to let us pull those folks in. We did a morning briefing with them, told them about our situation, just simply reminded them that they would have, in a major event, they would have responsibilities in the EOC that have to staff it, potentially staff it 24 hours a day. So we did that briefing, gave them that information, remind them of their responsibilities, and then we freed them up, let them go back to work. There was no need to keep them for this exercise, but it was a great opportunity to bring them in, talk about it just a little bit, and then let them do what they needed to do. Okay? The rest of that day, the staff in my office, we had our EOC open. We were fulfilling requests from the farm, and the liaison here in the county that day was Dennis Wallers from the Forest Service, our county ranger, and Lenny Rogers from Cooperative Extension. They were phoning in requests or radioing in requests to us. They simulating they were on the farm, getting requests from the crews, they come to us. Now, our job, just like any other disaster emergency and emergency management, we fulfill that request if we have the local resources to do it. If not, we pass that request up to the state, and then it gets filled, filters back down. We were able to fill, and I was very proud of our staff. We got requests all day, and they kept telling me out of Raleigh, they said, we're going to ask for something before the day's over, you can't fulfill. And that's okay, because that's what we do. We pass it on, we get that stuff here. At the end of the day, I got a request for some chemical decon solution. And I thought, well, this is it, this is the one I can't fill, so I start typing it in the computer to send it to Raleigh. If you know me, typing, that's a task, but I said, but to be honest, let's call and ask. So staff in the office started calling, and Johnson's mill, Rogers' mill, no, no, the place in Hidnute, no. Guy walked in my office, he said, I found 15 gallons on the shelf at Hog Slap. So I typed my request, you know, delayed that response, we found some locally. We were able to fill every request they had that day, so I was very proud of our staff and our county for stepping up. I mean, I was reaching out. We didn't move anything that day, but the request for straw bales, I contacted Josh Mitchell in Maintenance, I said, Josh, where do you typically get it? He told me, I said, how long would it take for you to get a guy to go pick it up and get it out there? He said, probably 30 minutes. So that's what we put back in the scenario, sent it to Raleigh, because they were testing us, in my opinion, that whole day. I told you, if you remember, in 2008, we did a very similar exercise as this. After this exercise, I really questioned whether or not the state learned anything in 2008. They tell you that USDA keeps changing rules, and they do, and I understand that, so they keep revising the plan. This was very educational for us, I think it's very educational for the state. At one point during the exercise that day, I requested a share of information, and I will tell you, Department of Agriculture has the best maps I've ever seen in state North Carolina. They have maps, and I found out during this exercise, they're going to keep those maps. I got a request, I had, was called to come, call in on conference calls, on a conference call with the state vet, Director of Poultry, Dr. Martin, and two or three other people in the room down there, and I explained my request, that I was trying to, because our initial farm, if you look at the five kilometers around that farm, there are 51 other farms in that five kilometers. So the potential for spread was huge. We don't know if we can share it with you. I said, well, it's a data request, I'm asking you to share it so we can identify the possibilities. Well, we can give you a map with dots on it. I said, my GIS, GIS guy came out here yesterday, did me a map with dots on it, and our Cooperative Extension folks, Allison Brown stood in my office, and she put names on 99% of those farms out of her head. So I basically told the guy in Raleigh, I said, I've got better information from my staff here than you're going to provide me, and I know you've got the best maps in the state. Well, we'll have to go to our attorneys and ask that question. I still hadn't got an answer to that, so. I'm not sure they learned things in 2008. I will tell you, I will be participating in an after-action review, the first or second week of August, with the folks in Raleigh and from Johnson County. But I think the exercise was very beneficial to us. Some of our local fire departments got to participate, that weren't part of the thing in 2008. So we learned some things on our side. I think they learned a lot in Raleigh, as far as two state agencies coming together and working together, they were jumping some hurdles down there, I think, but they made it work. So sum all that up, I think our folks in Alexander County did a great job, our volunteers, our county staff, everybody had the right attitude when they show up at the EOC. They know that it's a possibility. We hope it never happens. We came as close as anything in October with the tornado that came through, and we didn't have to activate our EOC on a 24-hour basis. We did put a lot of people in the field during that for damage assessments, but we didn't have to activate our EOC. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the avian influenza exercise.
Russ, the last instance I remember were Kentucky and Tennessee about a year ago. I've not heard of any recently. Are you aware of any recently?
No, sir. No, that Kentucky, Tennessee, and I think Alabama, that was the three. I was trying to think of the third one. But no, it's been a little over a year ago, and that was a low path, and again, USDA did not do indemnification on those birds, those companies wound up eating those birds. They couldn't sell them for dog food. They had disposed of them.
Bill, I think now there, I think something that spinoff of this, at least for growers, there is some insurance available now that it's more, I guess, loss of income type potential, because it's my understanding, it's a little undefined if you have an incident on your farm, how long you have to wait before you're cleared to take birds again. And you talk about a financial impact, if somebody misses two or three flocks, and you know, most times, those things are expensive to build and equip. Usually, there's some debt and leverage on them, so you know, I've seen some growers now sign up and take some insurance coverage that hadn't had it in the past, which I think is a good mitigant, certainly financially for them.
Yes, sir.
But I wasn't aware of any recently, which is a blessing. It's going to happen someday, I mean.
Absolutely, and we did this exercise at the time of year where you typically don't have this disease, hot weather. This is no different than human flu. It's spring of the year and fall of the year, and they talk about migratory birds, and that's when they're moving north and south, that's part of the problem. The insurance is a great thing, I know that, and I got in trouble in Raleigh one time because I'm, I tried to defend the folks in Alexander County, and the guy said, we're going to come in, we'll depopulate, we'll clean the house, and we'll put your birds back. And I said something ugly in the back of the room, and he looked right at me, and I said, I'm sorry I said that out loud, but you can't get these people, you can't convince these people you're going to put birds back. And he said, well, no, wait a minute, we'll be a couple months, and then we'll put back a test flock. And I said, so he's lost three flocks. At a minimum, he's lost three flocks. And he finally fessed up and said, yes. And I said, you just put the man out of business. If he's depending on his flocks to make his payments, you put him out of business. So that's something we talk about every time we get in this discussion in Raleigh, and a lot of it comes back, and I'll defend Department of Agriculture and North Carolina, they go to bat for North Carolina, but USDA writes the rules about indemnification. And the rules, it's hard to play a game when the rules keep changing, and that's where we're at with this. But I know, based on that 147 million dollars a year, this is critical for this county. And the goal with avian influenza is quick eradication. You catch it early, you stop it where it started, and you don't let it spread. So that's the goal, and that's, you know, the other reason we participate, because we want to be, and we're just a support mechanism for those folks, you know. The other question we hadn't got 100% answer for is all the expenses the county incurred, is that coming from USDA, is that coming from the state rainy day fund? Don't have an answer for that yet either. So the exercise gives us a chance to train, it gives us a chance to ask these questions, just like me asking for a data share. We'd have to go to our attorneys, well, you know, I know what legislation says, you can share it during a disaster. Is this not a disaster? And they didn't want to come out and answer that question. So raising those questions during an exercise maybe prevents that happening in a true event. So it was great, and again, I'm very proud of the staff here in Alexander County for the job they did. They stepped up, very hot day, but they worked real hard. Some of our volunteers, literally, they don't let you get out of your truck when you pull on that farm, so for an hour, hour and a half, they sit in the cab of that truck on a hot day. Some of those fire trucks don't have air conditioning, so they were doing it very realistic. But our guys did a great job. I appreciate this opportunity. I'd like to mention one thing real quick, other than that, I'm going to shift gears on you, and I didn't give Mr. French a warning about this. We are currently working in our office to rewrite our emergency operations plan. It's somewhat dated, it was written originally in 2007, 2008, the board adopted it. A lot of things have changed with federal regulations and state regulations since then, so we're currently going through and revising that. We're sharing it with our department heads for review. When everybody at the department head level's on the same page, we'll be bringing that to you gentlemen for approval sometime, hopefully September, October timeframe, we'll get all that wrapped up. It's coming along well. Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you, Russ. A lot of good information. Appreciate us performing well here in Alexander County. I'm sure those poultry farmers are tickled that we can respond if need be, so thank you for that.
And Russell, normally when you give a report, it's good, it's positive information. Our folks on the emergency preparedness, as well as emergency response, seem to do well, no matter what the, you know, what the real situation or the exercise. And if you would, just let them know that we appreciate, we appreciate their hard work, and we appreciate your hard work.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, and I will tell you, whether they're paid or volunteer, they give it 100% every day.
Yep.
Very real good. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number three, I recognize County Manager Rick French for the resolution by the governing body of application for Alexander County Waterline Extension Project. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your pocket is a resolution, and this is required by the North Carolina Clean Water Revolving Loan and Grant Act of 1987. We have, are being offered a state bond loan in the amount of $4,971,335, and this resolution puts in, basically puts in, is a requirement that we accept the state bond loan offer from the state, and this is part of one of the many pieces of, or processes that we have to go through to qualify. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Just for further clarification, I think Commissioner Mayberry normally makes this point, that water is paid for purely by water, not by general revenue.
That's correct.
Correct?
All right. I entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions?
I was just looking, I mean, it's approximately 71,000 linear feet of lines, a mile's 5,280. You know, we're talking 14 miles?
Yes, sir.
14 miles of water lines? You know, and these are two-inch to eight-inch. You know, these aren't running to people's houses, these are mains, and that's going to give a lot of people access.
Yes, sir.
To county water.
Yes, a good thing. No other questions? Well, I entertain a motion to approve. Raise the right hand, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item number four, we've been talking about this a little bit. We have the resolution declaring the opioid crisis a public nuisance in Alexander County. I think everyone's had a chance to read through it, look at it, it's basically the same that we have approved before. I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So I make a motion to approve the resolution declaring the opioid crisis a public nuisance in Alexander County, North Carolina, as presented.
I will second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, approve. Thank you, gentlemen. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number five, designation of voting delegate to NACC annual conference, that's Commissioners Conference. And Mr. French, can you give us a little information on that?
The conference will be this year held in Hickory at Cataba Convention Center. I think we have two Commissioners that have signed up to attend, Chairman Reese and Commissioner Mayberry, I believe that's the two. And so one of you two gentlemen needs to be designated as the voting delegate in the business portion of the.
I'll make a motion that Chairman Ronnie Reese be the voting delegate for our board at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference in Hickory.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion approves. Thank you, guys, I guess. Moving on to item number six, recognize County Manager Rick French once again, our county sales tax revenue for 2017, 2018 budget year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll still be receiving sales tax, it runs a couple of months behind. As we've reported in the past, we're running about even in the current budget, regular county sales taxes, $3,756,278, where 82.5% through, collected, and about a little over 83% of the year has expired. We budgeted $4,556,000 in sales tax revenue in the 17, 18 budget. New sales tax is about the same, $1,206,485, which is 84.3% collected, and we're again, 83.3% of the budget year has expired. We budgeted $1,431,000 for fiscal year 17, 18. Both the regular sales tax and the new sales tax are running ahead of last year. Regular sales tax is running 3.3% ahead of last year, and our new sales tax is running just a little over 7% ahead. All those are not big gains, but every gain helps.
All right. Okay. Thanks, Mr. French. Moving on to item number seven, recognize Mr. French once again for Budget Ordinance Amendments, numbers one through three, Grant Project Budget Ordinance P1 and Capital Project Budget Ordinance P2.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Budget amendment number one is to increase the Health Department budget for community health grant award from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. The $150,000 grant will be used to cover some costs that were already included in the 2018, 2019 budget, plus add to the services provided for uninsured patients. I think our Health Director had told us about that one earlier. Budget amendment number two is to increase the Health Department budget for the receipt of the Duke Endowment Grant to establish an integrated behavioral health program. Total grant funding will be $175,000 over two years. The Health Department will add other revenue sources beginning in 2019, 2020 to continue the program after the grant ends. And again, that's something that Leanne Wisnant, our Health Director, had talked to us about during the budget process, and we certainly want to thank her for all her hard work and her staff's hard work on those two grants. Budget amendment number three is to increase Sheriff's Office fiscal year 2019 budget for insurance claim proceeds received in June for patrol car that was wrecked in May and deemed a total loss. The insurance proceeds revenue rolled into the fund balance when the car, when the year closed on June 30th of 2018, and this budget amendment allows insurance proceeds to be spent in this 2019 fiscal year. CDBG project, and this is P1, this is the Stony Point Elementary School wastewater project, which is, we're in the process of setting all that up. This is one of the steps we have to take. The Community Development Block Grant is for $894,750. Alexander County government provides revenue, $89,250 for a total project cost of $984,000. We're in the process of trying to select an engineer, and we'll talk about that in a minute about that. Ordinance P2 is the capital project budget ordinance for, this is the water system extension project, for $5,077,62. 4.9 million of those funds are from the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality, State Reserve Project Loan, and then $99,427 is transferred from the county water fund, and project is the same, the expenditures are the same as we just mentioned, and this is part of the process we have to do to start the project, our water extension project, which will be the largest water projects we've had. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. French. Any questions?
Just to clarify, the $89,250 is the grant match that the county's paying to have the sewer, or the system run to the Stony Point School, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, no? We're not asking the schools to contribute any monies for that, we're doing that with the grant and with our money, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, entertain a motion to approve Budget Ordinance Amendments, one through three, and the Grant Budget Ordinance P1, and also P2.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, being none, ask for, raise your right hand, all in favor. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item number eight, recognize our County Manager Rick French once again for County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things, we are currently advertising for the CD- Just a couple of things, we are currently advertising for the CDBG Stony Point Elementary School wastewater project, the RFQ, which is the Request for Qualifications for Engineering Services. Qualifications must be submitted by August the 7th, 2018. A copy of the advertisement is in your packet, and again, the contract is what we discussed. Also, today, we received a letter from the North Carolina Local Government Commission stating that our $5,181,300 revolving loan fund has been approved. We still have, it's part of the process, but the funds have been approved by the LGC, which is a big step. And so we'll be moving ahead and reporting to you more on the process as it rolls along.
All right, thank you. A lot of things going on, good things. Any questions from anyone? All right. Thank you, Mr. French. Moving on, I'd entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda. I think everyone's had time to look at it in the packet. Entertaining a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor, but raising your right hand for approval. Okay, motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'd request a motion to go into closed session, reference to NCGS 143-31811 at number four, five, and six, for economic development, contractual, and personnel things. And we will reconvene only for the purpose of adjournment. Entertaining a motion to go into a closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.